Time for the September 7th meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. Jeremy, would you call the roll, please?
McGee.
Here.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Here.
Sage. Gassen. Kenjuk.
Here.
King.
Here.
Lloyd. Stone.
Okay, thank you very much. There we are. Please join me with the pleasure of leaving.
The pleasure of leaving to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This time we'll open the floor for public comment to ask if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak to the commission on anything, preferably things that are not on the agenda later on. Hold on to those. Then Jeremy, is Rose upstairs? Rose?
I am.
Anyone waiting for us electronically?
There is no one.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. This is for a consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 7th, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor? Do we have support?
No, 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 no. There's actually a couple corrections that need to be made.
Oh, go right ahead.
First, under page six, section D, it was labeled as penicillin. Actually, they're making bisillin. That's not, I don't know how critical that is, but on page seven, E, item E, it has Commissioner Lord voting A and N for the same proposal.
Say that one again.
He couldn't make up his mind that night.
Say that one again, Rich.
On number, page seven, motion E, Lord voted for both A and N for the same proposal.
Okay, got that. Got that, Rose and Jeremy? Okay.
I do. Get those fixed.
Thanks. So we have a motion by the mayor. Would you change that to as amended?
As amended.
And do we have support for that?
Yes.
Support by Rich?
Kenzak.
The roll call, please.
McGee.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Nick. The next item is public hearings, A, public hearing notice, 1200 Parkdale, Pfizer temporary trailers.
I'll take that one.
Okay.
Thank you. Evening commissioners. Last month, we heard from our Pfizer rep about what's going on on the site. It's exciting for Pfizer. It's exciting for the country. And as Commissioner Kendrick just mentioned, that in the minutes, they produce penicillin there now. But there's a bilicillin, I think I'm saying it right, shortage and
Bisillin?
Bisillin.
Does that actually produce bisillin there currently?
Well, they already do. It's the only facility in North America at the moment.
There we go.
So they need to produce more, like 50% more, if I remember. We'll let the representative talk about that. But so they have come in to ask for, to locate a temporary trailer that would house the office staff that will support that operation. There's an auxiliary lot, as you can see in the picture by the red dot. That was an auxiliary lot for an office building that used to be there, about 20,000 square feet. So staff looked at it, fire department looked at it, fire chiefs here. And we said, that's a perfect spot to put this temporary trailer. They're working on plans to commit for a permanent facility. But in the meantime, they have to meet this deadline that the feds are putting on them to try to make, I believe it's 50% more. And we are in support with the trailer. It's a self-contained trailer, air conditioning, sanitary, everything. It's not like St. John's where they had to tie into the systems. This is self-contained. So it will be easily moved when they're done. Restoration should be none because it's on pavement presently. So we would ask that we hold a public hearing tonight. Pfizer's ready to get going. They've been working with Randy, our billing official, and staff's in 100% support of this.
Okay. Any questions for Nick? So could we have the representative of Pfizer come forward, please? Just give us your name and address.
Dave Becker, 5025 40th Ave, Hudsonville, Michigan. And representative of Crane River Construction, Pfizer for this project.
Any more you want to add to what Nick was talking about?
I didn't think it would be there. You know, realistically, they're thinking probably about 18 months. I know they're, they're working on design right now for the permanent office building addition. So that's, that's going through. But they also are planning for some manufacturing increases too, to, you know, try to meet the demands that
That was my question. Are all the, is all the manufacturing going to be done in the existing facility?
There's going to, there's plans for a small addition off the north side.
But nothing in this trailer complex?
No, no, no.
Okay.
This is just in the interim. They've got, they're forecasting that it'll take through end of next year to catch back up because what happened when there was a penicillin shortage? They had the doctors prescribing bisillin as a long-acting, long-acting's penicillin for children. So that depleted the supply based on the, you know, what the historic demands were on it. Additionally, bisillin is, its primary indication is for syphilis, and there's a worldwide shortage of that. So they, they provide the bisillin for all of North America and like 32 other countries around the world. So in addition to the demand that was put in for supplementing that secondary indication for the penicillin, it depleted that. So now it's going to take that long.
So you may come back with a manufacturing addition, but also an office building?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe they've already met with you guys on the day on the office building.
Mr. Chairman, if I made the, so St. John's, that was area that was disturbed. This is, I'm not so worried about how long this stays or because it's on the pavement and they're not landscaping. They don't have to do anything. So yeah, it's, it's less invasive, if you will. So I don't know that we need a condition by how many years, if you'd like them to come back after two years. But I think we're going to see from our indications, start meetings sooner than that, the little addition and then possibly the office. So however you want to handle it.
Questions from the commissioners for Nick or the representative? It seems like two years, sort of in keeping, we have put a timeline on these things. That doesn't seem monotonous. You'd have to come back again if things occurred.
Understood.
It'd just be a pro forma kind of a thing to extend it. But, but on the other hand, it brackets it as well. We've required that of others. So, okay. Any other questions? Okay. At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. We'll call it 7:09. And I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter. This is a temporary office addition for Pfizer on Parkdale because of the demand for increase in the product that they use, bisillin. And they've been asked by the federal government to significantly, significantly increase the supply. Rose, do you have anyone waiting to speak?
No, no one's online.
Okay. Jeremy?
I did get one email that was in support of the Pfizer
Could you read it quick?
I'm a Rochester resident and I'm writing to express my support for both the Pfizer development, temporary structure, as well as the granary. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a name you could give us?
Julian Di Tomasio.
Okay. And you're here tonight?
Yes, I wasn't well two weeks ago, so I
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thanks for coming. Any other comments? So we'll consider the public hearing held and we'll call it 7:12. Back to the commissioners here, any, any further discussion? Could we have a motion?
So moved.
So this is to grant the temporary trailer structure for a period of two years. Moved by the mayor?
Support.
Supported by Sarah? Any other comments or questions? The roll call, please.
McGee.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Thank you very much and good luck to you. Okay, the next item is number six, considerations. A, Frank Rewald and son, 333 East Third Street. Vidya, are you there?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman McGee, members of the commission. I've just put up the site plan on the screen for you. The applicant appeared before you for a preliminary hearing on August 7th of 2023. And the proposal is to build at this time, a new two-story, 28,000 square foot mixed-use building on a 1.62 acre parcel. Now, this parcel is zone I-1, which is industrial one district. The proposed use is to have a market and a restaurant with a bar on the first floor and office space on the second floor. Now, the I-1 district does not permit a market or a restaurant or an office use unless it is in conjunction with an industrial use itself as an ancillary use. However, the applicant is seeking special project approval from the planning commission and the city council, which gives them the ability to have some flexibility in design of the site and the use that is being proposed. In the master plan that was adopted by the city in April of 2022, the site is designated as mixed use, specifically mixed use one category. Since you saw it at your last meeting, the applicant at the time was provided feedback on the traffic light at the intersection of East Third and East Second that they were proposing. Basically, parking, additional landscaping in the parking lot, accessible sidewalks, addition of details to the facade to make it less mass, to create a lesser mass. Since then, the applicant has revised the plans and the biggest changes are the floor area of the building has been reduced from 33,132 square feet to 28,000, which is basically a drop of about 5,132 square feet. But the footprint of the building has increased from 94 feet, eight inches by 116 feet, eight inches that you see over here. The 94 feet, eight inches dimension has now increased to 120 feet. So they dropped one entire floor, make it now just two stories, but they have slightly enlarged the footprint. The number of parking spaces has been reduced by 26. There has been some increase in landscaping at the corner of Water Street and East Third Street. And the traffic light that was previously proposed at this intersection has now been eliminated. Going over a little bit more in detail, when the applicant originally appeared before you, in response to all the traffic studies that had been done over a period of time in the city, it was determined that maybe a traffic light at this intersection would help control traffic that are on East Second, Third Street, the future Mill Street and Water Street. However, at the last meeting, there was some concern that this traffic light might not really be necessary and might in fact work counter to free flow of traffic and might actually create more issues than solve them. Since the meeting, the applicant has met with city administration. I believe they have worked with Nick. And at this time, they have determined that the traffic counts in the area do not warrant a full signal light. Instead, the traffic issues in the area are going to be addressed by restricting turn movements on two of the lanes at that intersection so that the flow of traffic can be better controlled. I will defer to Nick and the applicant to explain that a little bit more so the planning commission can get an idea of how the traffic will still be addressed. The site is well-connected. It's got sidewalk along all lots of street frontages. The applicant is also proposing sidewalk on the west side of the building and on the north side. There is connectivity to the sidewalk going all the way to the residences at Royal Park and to the mills also. So the site in terms of sidewalk connectivity is well-connected to the trail system also. Now, the proposed office market and restaurant building, the total amount of parking spaces required are 146. Now, the office and the market use will require 76, while 70 spaces are required for the restaurant and the outdoor patio that is associated with it. But the outdoor patio and the restaurant are basically classified more as after-hours business. So a total of 79 new spaces are being provided for the entire development. In the packet that the applicant has submitted to you, they have provided pictures showing what parking lot looks like during the daytime when the offices are fully functional, especially the Frank Rewald headquarters building that is right there. In the post-pandemic era, now we have more people coming back to work, but there is definitely a hybrid schedule. The parking lots are not as full as they used to be before. They are not completely obsolete either. They are being used, but the need for parking for office spaces is not as much as it used to be pre-pandemic. So at this time, there is a shared parking situation between the proposed building, Mills Restaurant, and the Frank Rewald Headquarters. Between all three buildings, there is a total of 319 parking spaces. And since the peak hours of usage of the restaurant on this site and the mills will be when the headquarters building office is not functional or the second story office is not going to be functional, we believe the collective total of the parking spaces is sufficient to meet the needs of all three buildings and the site in its entirety. For this particular building and the site, a total of four handicap accessible spaces are required, and the applicant has provided them on the west side of the building. One of the changes they have made is to include additional landscape islands in front of the building. Previously, there was a full row of parking spaces here. They have expanded these landscape islands to soften the appearance of the building when you see it from Water Street. Previously, we also asked about placing the mechanical yard in this area. And the reason for this is placing the outdoor patio over here would result in some increased sun exposure for those people who are in the outdoor dining. In addition, there is also these environmental monitoring wells that are located right next to it. It made sense to put the mechanical yard and not an outdoor seating or a dining area next to where the environmental control area wells are. This area is proposed to be fully screened with landscaping and with the green belt over here, it should not create much of a visibility issue on East Second Street. With regard to building facade, that was a topic of substantial discussion at the last meeting. Now, these are the pictures that we can provide it to show you the use of the parking lot when the office is fully functional. As you can see, there's really not too many people in the office who are using the lot all the time. This is the floor plan of the building. Now, this elevation was subject to significant discussion at the last meeting. At the time, the applicant had still proposed a fully brick building, but they were trying to match the look of the mills. Now, the mills is over a 120-year-old structure, so the applicant cannot exactly replicate the mills, but they were trying to create a cohesive identity between all of the buildings on the site. So it looks like this restaurant and outdoor patio ties in with the mills, the other restaurant too. The planning commission had offered some suggestions, and these included adding arches to the windows like you have at the mills and adding a bit more design elements to the window. So the revised elevation basically has dropped it from three stories to two stories. And basically, they've kept the plan the same. The big differences over here are the arches to the windows have not been added as suggested by the planning commission or recommended by the planning commission, which is something you can offer feedback on tonight. And the balcony that is proposed over here, previously, this was a balcony with railing so you could see through it. At this time, it appears as a guardrail with opaque panels. This balcony design is very modern and doesn't really comport with the architecture that is proposed. So we would suggest that we can go back to the balcony and the railing design that they had in their previous elevations, which seemed more in keeping with the building design itself. The site is a brownfield, and as such, the applicant has submitted all the cleanup documents and all the baseline studies. It's a pretty voluminous book. We have also submitted a summary of all the cleanup that is done on the site. And the brownfield remediation is always a public benefit to the community because you're cleaning up longstanding contaminants from the soil, which prevents it from eventually leaching into the creeks or into the nearby rivers and the groundwater supplies. And finally, with regards to the sustainability evaluation worksheet, we had asked the applicant to make some corrections, which they did. They still need to make a correction when they eliminated the traffic light and changed some. They need to eliminate reference to traffic light in their sustainability worksheet. They're no longer proposing the traffic light. However, they continue to get points for that particular indicator because they are attempting to control traffic as required by the city. So they're meeting what the city is requiring of them, and therefore they do get points for that indicator. At this time, the project scores 16.5 on 20, which makes it sustainable under our sustainability evaluation. So the applicant has been working with the city for a long time now. They did receive feedback from the planning commission. I believe they addressed most of the concerns. The one item on which feedback I would still request from the planning commission is the building architecture. Are the window designs and the elevation being proposed something the planning commission finds that it can support? Our recommendation at this time is for the planning commission to place this for a public hearing on your next available agenda. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the commissioners or Vidya?
Mr. Chairman, so I, I met with TIA, which is our Traffic Improvement Association. So they're our experts. So I was pushing pretty hard for control of that situation. So this gentleman's awesome. He spent great, he spent two hours with me on the phone, literally. Pulled up all the aerials, traffic information. He had, we sent him all the traffic study information. He was well versed when I called him. So we agreed that, Vidya, you want to go back to the site plan? Yeah, thanks. So he said down the line, someday, if Suave ever comes in to the south, then you would look at a more formal signalization. He said that based on the numbers, especially now with it being a smaller building, the numbers don't warrant, as we had talked about, a traffic signal there. But what we would suggest is a no, you can come out the driveway. When you get to Third Street, as it's, it's turning, right turn only, no left turn there.
This is out of that drive in the middle of the southern property.
So they could come out their driveway and they could still make a right to come out, but they can't make a left on a second to go downtown.
And the applicant is okay with that?
Yeah, it doesn't matter if they are or not, to be honest.
All right.
So this was, this was hard. This is about, this is about, just kidding. It was about safety. And I talked to Chris about this. So it's about safety. And then there will probably be a right turn only in from Third Street into the project. So we don't want people stacking up to make a left coming by the fire hall stacked. It's only a two-lane road. And when I talked to the TIA gentleman, he said the only way to make this even reasonably safe, if you, if the warrants were there, was you would have to make a passing lane, a dedicated right turn lane, an acceleration lane.
We don't have the right of way.
And we don't have the right of way. And he said, so down the line, if you go to the Suave site, when we, when they all line up, we would have the right of way to do that. And you would stop it there or it would be a three-way stop, expected, et cetera. So at this point, it would just restrict the turns and we should be good with the volume that's there. People can still, if they need to go to the west, I'm sorry, to the east, they would come out and go to Water Street, and it's more controlled that Water Street to come out. They could go up Water to University and back down. So I, he was very stern about, don't put a light there. And so I accepted that. So that was great. And Vidya, we talked about, in her last report, she had talked about they should reach out to the Trailway Commission. They did. And Trailway Commission was kind of like, why are you asking us? We're not connected to the trail. Then we remembered why they did it the first time because Rewald's, the north end of Rewald's building did connect to the trail by the amphitheater. Here, they're like, you're good. If you want to connect, great. You know, it's on private property. But so they checked that box and they talked to the Trailway Commission. They're great with that. So we're ready to go for a set of public hearing and, and move to the next step.
Did you talk to them about the rounded window tops?
We did. And, and I'm going to let Chris talk about that.
Before we get there, all right, so what, what will be the remedy for the connection to the trail?
They don't have, there is none. Yeah.
There is none?
No. So like Vidya said, we have connectivity within the site to get to all the public sidewalks in that you could still go up the, right there, where she's showing the arrow. There still will be a connection to get to the Royal Park from the new building past the back of Franks up to the top. So it's on private property, so it's not part of the trail system, but they wanted to connect it so their people could get there easily without walking through a parking lot. I know, Sarah, you talked about more trees, et cetera. So they did that in the parking lot. And there's no direct connect through the middle of the lot. We don't want that. So we want it along the river, and that's where it's at.
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Chris Aller with AKA Architects. I'm at 303 East Third in Rochester. And I do have a, a little bit of a presentation that I can speak to some of these topics. I know Vidya always does a great job with detailing and describing the project. And I'll give you a little bit more. If I can figure out how to advance my, there we go. So this is the overall site and Mr. Sage, you had talked about how we're connecting with the site overall. We've put a lot of thought and consideration on how this building sits on the site, how it connects to the fabric of the city itself. And a lot of thoughtful consideration has gone into this. Originally, we had taken a look at maybe placing the building at the corner of Water and Third. We took a look at that, but there's not a lot of pedestrian activity at that corner. The sidewalks are pretty narrow. You have a big hill going up Third. It's not friendly to get around. And then on Water Street, there's only one side of the street has a small sidewalk. So that kind of led us to further study where to place this building. Really, the, the majority of the pedestrian activity is up here, north of the Mills building, on that Mills pathway. You know, it's got a nice brick pavers. It's landscape. I came over here just before the meeting. I saw a lot of people taking senior photographs, family photographs. It's a pretty popular site. So we wanted to engage the site, kind of have this building not just be an island, but fit into the fabric of downtown. So by placing the building up against the, the Paint Creek, we can try to connect to that existing activity and bring that down further. So we, we do have an existing pathway in front of the Rewald's headquarters. And with the change in the square footage of the building and the reduction in the parking, we're able to get a larger pathway in front of, of the proposed building. We're at about 13 feet wide right now. We have some nice trees and some landscape area. So our, our hope is, is that this becomes a nice activated space and, and adds to the overall pedestrian fabric of the downtown. We're also proposing a smaller trail while, while we're, we don't have a, a really great connection to the, to the Paint Creek Trail with the bridge, but we're proposing just a small little trail from Lyons Park on the east side of the Rewald's headquarters. It's kind of small down there. It's not a lot of generous space, but we see that as maybe being a little more of a, a hidden path that you might discover as you're, as you're exploring downtown. And then that pops up onto this, the restaurant patio space here. So we kind of saw that as a nice connection tying, tying the site into the overall fabric of, of downtown. So that's how we, we've kind of located the building there. It kind of fits into the fabric a little bit better. It also provides some better views to nature. The balconies are a huge highlight of the current Rewald building. You, you're up there having your morning coffee and you feel like you're up north overlooking the creek. So we wanted to recreate that where the building's located now. The floor plans are, are, have pretty much remained unchanged. It's gotten a little bit bigger. We have been putting some thought into the restaurant and market. We have yet to engage the tenant for the second floor, but they all liked the larger floor plate. They gave them some more flexibility in, in how they're going to use the building. So to the, to the question regarding the aesthetics of the building, the building obviously changed because it's, it's larger in, in footprint, but not as tall. You know, the overall goal of this project with the Rewald's was to create a new building that was inspired by the mills. We realized that we're not going to be able to design a 100-year, design a new building to look like a 120-year-old building. But we're, we're taking cues from that. We wanted to design a Class A office space, and it will feel like a modern Class A office space, just with cues taken from the Mills building itself. We have the engaged pilasters on the building. Obviously, it's a, it's a brick building itself. The proportions of the windows are similar to the mills. Same thing with the pilasters. And then we have a crisp metal cornice at the top of the building here. So this view is from the, the corner of Second and, I'm sorry, Third and Water, kind of looking from the farmer's market. You kind of see how it all fits in. The Rewald's didn't want another architectural statement building. They wanted something that would, would fit in and complement the existing fabric of, the architectural fabric of, of the area. And they thought this approach was, was the appropriate way to go with this. You have a few more views here. This is a little closer view. This is more of a photorealistic. So this is looking at the northwest corner of the building itself. This is the front door. We placed the Uh, we placed the building, the front door of the building inside the site a little bit. So this kind of lends itself to pulling those, that pedestrian from the Mills pathway down uh, to the building on this side. And then you can see the the patio space here. Uh, and to Vidia's comment about the uh, the balcony on the backside, uh, we do intend, uh, we do intend the balconies to have uh, transparent um, rails. And that's just a rendering glitch, it came across as being a pick, but it will be a guardrail type that you can look through to be appropriate for it. And then this is a closer look. Once again, this is uh, the front door. You can kind of see the the uh, the guardrails around the restaurant's patio. We we're planning on some overhead doors that can be opened up uh, in fine weather. And then you can kind of get a little bit of a feel on how this pathway, we're trying to capture some space in between the buildings and uh, and the landscaping to kind of create it in a nice outdoor space. And then this is a view uh, along uh, Third. You can kind of see the the dumpster that we're hiding in in brick enclosure and landscaping. And uh, you can see how the 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 new trees and landscaping kind of buffer the the uh, the parking lot and uh, give, create a little space in between the parking and the building itself. And then uh, just a few more images, you know, and and to the comment specifically about the archtop windows, you know, it's it it's our intent not to copy it. We we could take a look at uh, putting archtop windows in there. Uh, I think that would lean towards more trying to copy the Mills Building instead of being inspired by it. Uh, we think uh, you know, more crisp, clean, square top windows are more appropriate. But that is something that, you know, as we move along in this process, we could take a closer look at uh, with that. So um, and I think that's uh, yeah, that that kind of wraps up my presentation. Hopefully, um, you you feel that this is a worthwhile project and and we can schedule a a public hearing uh, at at the next meeting.
Any questions for this gentleman?
I'm I'm sorry, one more thing, Bill Mesta uh, is here with uh, Bill works uh, for the the Rewald's and he he's here to answer any questions as well.
Hi, Mr. Mesta, good to see you. You want to make some comments?
I just have a a couple of things to say. Uh, the Rewald family apologizes that they could not be here in person.
Just give us your name for the reference.
It's Bill Mesta. Uh, and I'm also uh, three eighty Shrewsbury, Clarkston, Michigan. Um, I'm the CFO for the Rewald Family of Companies, been with the family for twenty six years. And just again, apologizing they couldn't be here. They are having literally an entire Frank Rewald family uh, uh, vacation that they have never had in the last twenty six years. I've never known the entire family, not one member is here. So I'm on their behalf, I just want to say thank you for your consideration here. Um, this is the fifth project that the family will develop and own. Um, they are going to be here, this is the, the next generation is now picking up. So with the company is a hundred and four, you're a hundred and five years old. This is now the fourth, uh, third and fourth generation are collaborating on this project. And this is how you get one generation to the next, understanding how to to work with the community and being with the community. Uh, we feel we're increasing the tax base again. Uh, we're gonna be creating jobs for not only construction, but once it's completed, there is gonna be uh, re- more restaurants and the office space. We're bringing in a large accounting firm. Uh, it's their executive headquarters uh, for UHY CPAs. And this is a unique project because we do have a market, we have a bar, and we have the office space. And it is a Class A, so it's another Class A building coming into town to um, bring people into town. Um, the building, we feel is suitable and meets the needs of our tenants, the owners. And we took obviously all the recommendations that this commission had recommended uh, for that part. Outside of that, just like to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I have a few, I think. You know, I I think this is a good project. Uh, I will vote to move it to a public hearing. I mean, it seems like a lot of good things. I guess just for the commission, I I, you know, I just have a little philosophical struggle where, you know, it says here, the district does not permit any type of office unless industrial operation also does not permit restaurants. Well, that's what they're bringing here. And it's like, I know we can have special pro, you know, it's a special project and we can, but it's almost like, well, it said, you can't have this and you can't have that, and that's what they're bringing us. And then it kind of puts the pressure on us to say, well, okay, it's a good project, but it's really not what it's zoned for. So I, you know, I just, it's like just a philosophical thing that makes me.
And I understand your point.
It makes me struggle a little, and I'm not saying it's not a good project and I don't appreciate, I I think it got better.
What I wish we had done is rezoned this.
So, try maybe, so so you have to remember, we just approved the master plan, it's for mixed use. We would, we don't want industrial there, so the mayor's a hundred percent right, under the present zoning, but we are advocating to go the next step and rezon, this will be mixed use and this is exactly what you want. So that's, that's the ju.
Yeah, I recall this parcel being talked about, but had we brought it up, I think everyone would have understood that it should not remain industrial, that that it should have become something else.
But then and and then it looks like we're.
I understand.
But yeah, we're cutting a favor for a developer.
Yeah, the law is very clear that it's.
Right, so that's why I struggle with it, you know, from a philosophical. But I mean, I will support to have a public hearing and I, you know, I I think it's a good project, it's just.
Nick, you had some other comments?
That's, I just wanted to say that, that's all.
Okay, other comments?
I have a couple of comments. I mean, it's, I agree with the points you're making there, but I think you look at the properties around it and you have the Mills. You, so you have restaurant already of the office building. We have where the vet office is, another restaurant brewery coming in. So it does seem to fit with the intended use and going towards the path of what we approved for um, the master plan. Um, I I like the changes that you guys um, made. Um, I think you took our feedback and incorporated it. Um, I really like adding in the extra green space in front of the building, taking out some of that parking. I think that softens it, I think it'll make that a much nicer and enjoyable patio, just you're not staring at the parking lot. Um, just a couple of things, so like the the one path on, oh gosh, uh, leading out to Third Street um, from the main office building, I noticed the sidewalk, it basically, it comes down, it turns, it turns, couple of hard ninety degree turns. Um, if you're on bikes, very difficult, I think. I don't know if that can be softer, if there's an elevation.
There's a nice tree there.
Oh, there's a tree you're avoiding.
Yeah, and it's, you know.
And Sarah, yeah, we and we we don't want people riding bikes on walkways. These are not pathways, which are fifteen feet wide, these are sidewalks.
Well, but you you connect off the trap, you're gonna get bikes because you connect off, you already have a lot of bikes coming through there.
So the the bike trails on the other side of the river, that's where the bikes are supposed to go. This is, I've never seen anybody ride a bike down the sidewalk towards the west.
I, every, every Saturday, every Saturday morning, going to the, going to the farmer's market. We, absolutely, that path that comes back through, it's a great path, tons of people, it's not just.
To where?
I.
Next to the building?
So.
Headquarters building?
Uh, yeah, we come right in front of the headquarters building, right through the parking lot onto Water Street.
And over to the market.
It's not designated that way.
You have a right to.
It's not, it's not designated, I'm self-incriminating, I'm just telling you, and it's not only my family, I see, there's a lot of people to get, because that's the path to the farmer's market. Yes, you could keep on going, that's just the, I don't know.
Okay.
You kind of go out, you go out of the way to, if you keep on going.
Is there something they could do right there to soften this?
Well, that's why I was asking, does it need to make?
We know a guy that can get rid of the tree, so.
I like trees, I'm not advocating to get rid of the tree.
I I hear you, it's just, yeah, I, we didn't design that as a bike, but that's a pedestrian path, but I.
Note it to myself, I should go a different way.
Do you ride a bike on Main Street? You don't ride a bike on Main Street?
Oh, no, it's awful.
Okay.
No.
It's kind of same thing here, but that's all.
Okay, uh, that was one point. Um, oh, question about the handicap parking. Um, I do notice a couple of the spots look to be nearest to the main office lobby entrance. Um, and then, but there's none up by the restaurant patio. Would, I don't know if it would make sense to consider putting a couple up there rather than kind of in the middle of the building?
We can take a look at that. Um, one of the things we're, that will happen as part of this project is that the the property boundaries are gonna be redefined. Uh, so in, so the parking for the Mills, the parking lot for the Mills will be on that property. It it won't be shared across property lines. So we can take a look at that because like on the north side up here, that's, at least right now, is proposed to be the headquarters parking. But we could take a look at, you know, possibly putting there, them there, but that's a a simple improvement that we could study.
Okay, just that consideration. And then are there um, curbs in front of the parking where the handicap is leading to the building?
Yes, there will be, there will be curbs here and with a little curb cut in between each one of the the striped areas that for no parking.
ADA compliance, that that's such an opening, a certain width of opening.
Okay, I just couldn't tell from the drawing if there were curbs there.
Yeah, I don't know if I can zoom in on this.
But they're ramped.
Yeah, there there's, some of them aren't, some are flat, but then they have to have a X amount of feet of width, Vidia probably knows that.
Okay.
I think it's eight feet.
And then my only other comment, um, I know Vidia spoke to the the balcony um, with a opaque or it'll be transparent glass, it sounds like. Um, I think it actually um, is, it's a good way to bring in kind of the modern elements of the Rewald Headquarter with, you know, the more old character of the Mills and kind of blend them nicely together. So I I I liked that change, my personal preference.
Other comments?
Sure. So I appreciate what you guys have done. I think you listened very well, in a sense, and not talking down, but I think you were certainly responsive to the concerns that the planning commission had the last time you guys were here. And um, I think it's a nice addition to that spot. You know, I walk by there all the time and it's blacktop, it's gravel, and I think it's gonna look uh, very nice once that area is cleaned up and I think it's a good use of 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 the property. So I'm in support of it and and abstinently, I would make a motion for a public hearing.
Sir, support? Support very rich. Anyone, any other comments?
I had a question, um, but it's for uh, Ms. King. Where would you put the additional handicap? Because I I I see where I know I would put them.
Oh, I I was looking at the north end of the building, but I, they made a good point of how they were trying to segment the parking.
Right.
Would have been along right where their, oh.
You wouldn't want to take out that green, that that's the.
No, I know that, I know that.
Trying to zoom in here and and I can't. So I'll I'll try to describe it, e- explain it here. So right now, what we're, our initial thought was, is to have a nice landscaping corner here.
Right.
Right, that kind of catches your eye and that catches you as you're walking down in front of the Rewald's building. And then we have a little gap and then we have uh, two park, two handicap parking spaces right here, two more further down. So we could slide these up and maybe minimize some of this landscaping here at the corner.
Closer to the door.
Closer to the front door. We could also take a look at the parking on here.
Yeah.
That's where I was looking at.
I like it.
But but he was talking out, they were trying to allocate the parking and get away from.
So those are already committed?
Right now, those are shown as the Rewald Headquarters Parking Spaces. But we can take a closer look, I mean, we're drawing lines right now, it's it's uh, nothing's formalized yet. So we could take a look at moving those lines around and and getting a handicap parking closer to the patio.
Okay. So we'll probably see something different at the public hearing. Could you put up the uh, the view from the corner that showed all three? This is, this is what sells it for me, I I'm a kind of an architectural guy. And uh, although I'm not an architect by any means, but I love the contrast.
Play one now.
I like, I like that very much, very old, very modern and kind of in between. I think that's gonna be uh, considered a very attractive shot by people in the future.
It's cool, the brick, the the brick color in the middle of the new Rewald Building?
Yeah.
Ties in, so it kind of all blends together in a line.
There's a nice little lid, a little hat on this building, this has a hat too.
But it shows the the city as it grew through the ages and I like that.
There you go.
I like that shot very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I'm not trying to call on Audible here or move the goalposts, but you know, looking at it is, the only thing I would possibly say is if there's any way to soften up that parking lot with maybe another island or two or some, just to make it a little bit not so dominant with the hardscape, you know, with that parking lot, but otherwise, again, I'm gonna.
Put some brick on that corner?
I feel like the picture isn't capturing like these middle islands too.
I agree.
Yeah.
I, I know that, right, it's changed.
And and you can kind of see the trees are, they're light. We wanted to, we we ghosted the trees so you'd see the buildings.
And I appreciate that.
So there's, there's here, and then there's another tree here and further down.
That's fine.
How about the corner itself? Can you, can you put a little, you know, short brick wall there, just something to break up the visual?
Not a bad idea.
I, yeah, I think that's.
Maybe a bit. I'd even support just brick.
Yeah. Some kind of. Pavers kind of.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Yes, and something to break up the visual and tie it together. All right, we have a motion and it's been supported to set this for a public hearing. When will that be?
October, the first meeting October.
So this will be set for a public hearing, the first meeting in October. Uh, any other discussion on that motion? The roll call.
Can I, one more comment?
Yes.
Is there gonna be anywhere for bike parking?
We we do not have that planned right now.
But they're doing it as we speak.
I I mean, you're you're near the, not, you're not on the trail, there's not a specific bike path, but I think bike parking.
No, and I think that's fair, because it is the market and people are gonna come to the market with their bikes. So I think that's, we could, a couple of bike racks in in that thirteen feet, Chris, maybe, that's a good idea. I'll buy that one. You'd walk your bikes down the sidewalk, put them in this slot.
I wouldn't run people over, or even if they're near that little trail in the back.
Yeah.
Something.
That's a good idea.
I think it would be.
Away from vehicles, maybe.
A good in investment for people that are gonna be frequent visitors.
I I I say that Sarah can ride her bike anywhere she would like in this city. That's a proclamation right there, right?
You know what, the sad part is I didn't ride it here, I was driving, I'm like, why am I driving a half mile or a mile?
The roll call, Jeremy.
McGee?
Yes.
Howza?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll see you in October.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven miscellaneous, we're still on time, yeah.
We are, so we got a couple of things, Jeremy's gonna go first about the second meeting that we'd like to have.
So the second meeting's gonna be set for the twenty first of this month, if agreed upon. Um, that's primarily for the Parks and Rec Master Plan that we.
Is that a Thursday, by the way?
It is a Thursday, yeah, we kept with the month.
Okay.
Um, but that is uh, primarily for this Parks and Rec Master Plan, there's gonna be another smaller project on it.
And uh, McKenna will be making that presentation?
Uh, yep, so, uh, yeah, McKenna will be making that presentation, um, we're working with them now. Um, C- City Administration will be at Arts and Apples this week for our first community engagement. We have a survey online um, that I can share with all of the commissioners. And then we have a stakeholder meeting on the twelfth of next week, um, just to kind of get a uh, another um, outcome of feedback from the stakeholders in Rochester.
Could you send that to the commissioners?
Yes, I can.
That that schedule and that survey.
That's gonna be at Elizabeth Park?
No, that, that.
Oh, that, no, I'm sorry, that's the next one.
Yeah, so the twenty third, we're really focusing on Elizabeth Park in this master plan.
Yes.
Um, so the twenty third, we will be having a uh, state or another community engagement event at the park to allow the residents to come and will be lead flooding everybody in the area and uh, advertising Arts and Apples this week. Um, so that's where, that's what, that's what the second committee uh, meeting's for.
Okay.
But I can share the overall timeline with the commissioners for the Parks and Rec Master Plan, that's great.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that I knew the twelfth is at the fire station.
Gotcha, that's the other community, okay, we'll get that out, you, thanks. Um, and uh, Commissioner, so John and Vidian, Jeremy and I have been talking about not jamming you guys too hard. There's a lot going on because of the Parks Master Plan, we had to condense this, so lots of meetings on that. We're uber sensitive to finishing this master plan. So John, Vidia did a long um, called a verbal dis- or a written discussion about three options. So, and we really haven't settled on this yet. So as we're getting closer to finishing off these districts, the next step is to make it happen, all right? So we had talked about it in general at the meeting, we had the joint meeting, about three different options. So um, Vidia can go over them better than I in detail, but it's basically, do we just rip the Band-Aid off and say, here's all the new, or here's all the new um, districts? We do the public engagement, the public hearing and say, boom, this is your new zoning. And then fix the zoning orders to address that. Versus modification two was, no, adopt the master plan map, there they are. But you have the new districts and the existing districts, kind of what the mayor's talking about, where right now you're judging documents, uh, you're judging projects based on existing zoning. Do we let them rezon one parcel at a time? And then you've got all these different rules and regulations, a little confusing. Or you, what's the third one, Vidia?
So the first one would be to adopt the zoning map NMS, the second one would.
So the first one would be to adopt the zoning map N-MAS, the second one would be zoning map with new districts, but keep all the zoning as it is and let individual property owners request their rezoning, very, very messy way of doing it. And the third one is hybrid, which is basically uh we will still allow individual property owners to request their rezoning, but the key sites within the townships, uh within the city, I'm sorry, like the one we saw today, re-walled's property. Those are the key sites, like the cement batch plant, those we go ahead and do a city initiated rezoning and rezone it so that they are developed in conformance to the districts rather than have every second the project come as a special project. I can put the three options down in a memo and send it if it would help the planning commission read through it and sort of get a better sense of which way they would like to go.
I think we could talk about that at your second meeting.
Is there anything that advises against doing it all at once? We've we've just kicked these around forever.
Biggest thing would be creating non-conformities, but they're grandfathered in, so we're not taking anybody's rights. And in fact, we, you know, we didn't do radical cuts. There's one little snag, we figured out the indoor storage facilities, we did not that allow that in the industrial. We did before and the new ones, we did not. But again, there's, there can, we can tweak things as we go, but it'd just be creating the non-conformities, but it doesn't take anybody's property rights away, basically. Um, it's it's.
No, that's, that would be the cleanest way of doing it, adopting a zoning map, because the zoning map adoption will be a reflection of the master plan that was adopted by the city and its citizens. So it it's not going to be a document that was designed without input.
This is very dry, difficult material for, even for the commissioners and we've talked about it over a course of several years now, and I'm I'm just speaking for myself, but I would rather take the leap and get this done.
I think that's where we're we're all headed, so, okay. We'll get your memo for the next meeting, so.
All right.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, thanks, Vidya. Um, other than that, um just a quick update for less than five minutes about the marijuana situation, so.
Yeah.
Um, if it, so everybody's on the same page, so, thank you. I don't think we talked about it much last week, if I remember right. So in essence, short story is an outside group from Saginaw came in, um their attorney, attorney's last name is Tuma, he's kind of the the guru of all this. They pick communities that they feel like that they have opted out and then they look at the background of who voted what when the actual state took the the big league buffet to allow recreational marijuana. We were more for than against, so we're a target. So they finally got to us, Auburn Hills, us and Troy right now, and they picked those three communities and they do a couple of things. They do the first charter amendment, they have to go out and get ten percent of the people that voted in the last election and get those people to sign legitimate petitions asking for what they would like. They did that, they met the quota easily. Turn them into the city clerk, didn't meet the people, no drama, had a courier drop them off saying, here you go, this is gonna be on your ballot. We took it to city council quickly, like really quickly for a reason, um and said, we don't have a choice. The voters are gonna vote in November for two things, two charter amendments. Do you want to take the way the right in a sense of the city in the present charter to opt out of dispensaries only? They did not talk about grow, process, transport, or just one more section of it. So they didn't, they just wanted about dispensaries, retail operations. They call it adult, adult um recreational activities. So, but it's about marijuana, clarify that. Um, so they came in and so we show that to council, council's like, our hands are tied, okay, go for it on the ballot. They then wrote a second proposal that says, the, and the way they sold this, and I'm not, I'm not making a statement, I'm making a fact here, that, hey, if the city just decides to say, we're scared, so a lot of communities have gotten this forced on them and they said, oh, I don't wanna get into this, so we, they wrote their own ordinances. Or they just said, do, let the marketplace dictate it. So they sold it to a lot of people signing the petition like, hey, if Rochester does nothing, but they opt back in, you could have grow, you could have this, you could have the processing, all that, and you could have unlimited amount of dispensaries. So on our ordinance that they wrote, three only, to be treated no differently than any other retail operation. Alcohol, pencils, art, tires, doesn't matter, wherever, wherever you can do retail, which would be in the CB, it's okay, in the CBD or in the B1, so if you know, that's our, that's our main part of downtown. Only three operations. Um, you can't put any extraordinary um restrictions on that. They put in there, you can't be within eight hundred feet of a school, K through twelve, a church, so they, they wrote it kind of like the liquor license laws, right? Yeah, in the states, exactly the same thing. So they um, they wrote that ordinance, but then they wrote, here's how you get the licenses. If they pass it, there's three. So they made a hundred point system. If you are, have, if you've been registered with the the states, the big ma- recreational marijuana organization for the last two years, you get twenty-five points. If you're this, you get this points. Then they made one that said, if you have an existing lease before this gets approved, then you get up to forty-five points. So, and there's one little caveat that says, after thirty days after the city clerk submits to this county clerk the ballot language to be approved, when the county gets the clock ticks for thirty days, anybody that gets in in those thirty days with a signed lease or purchase of a building could get up to forty-five total points. One, automatically you get twenty-five and then for every day before the thirty, you get another point. So they they're looking to set up so you could, they knew the game, so what they do is they take masses of amount of money. So I got thir- so they figured, going too fast, they didn't do the math right because they didn't know when we were gonna submit it to the county. Everybody assumed it was right around the election time. Leanne sent it the next day after the council meeting. That made last Thursday at five o'clock the thirtieth day. On Wednesday, I got calls starting at six in the morning, I'm not exaggerating, from thirteen of our business owners saying, who are these people calling me? So, giving me a hu- one hundred thousand upfront, thirty-eight dollars a square foot, ten-year lease on my building, it's not even vacant. But they wanna do that and if I sign and then the voters vote no, I keep the hundred grand. Why shouldn't I sign it? And we can't say a word, we're like, you can do what you want, sir, ma'am. So thirteen called me and in about twenty, in about thirty hours, all thirteen ripped up the contracts, said we're not gonna participate. Matt, Matt, Jim?
Unless somebody owns a building and wants to do this or has a lease we're not aware of and wants to do this.
Exactly, so the next day, so Thursday.
Yep, starts are kind of closed out.
Yeah, Thursday at, at like eleven, we get the first one, the guy that owns Puff, Puff is the one in Utica.
Yeah.
He came in, super nice guy, very community oriented, said, it's a business, I do this now, I own six of them. He said, I make a million and a half a a month. Um, I, and so I, so being, I've never been to one and we don't know much about him. He said, I'm glad to educate, he brought in the attorney, um Dunn, Danaskis, so it's Danaskis and Yutuma are the big attorneys. And they're, and he, Danaskis sitting there just asking skinny thing, how many people do you bring in a day? Uh, in my brain, two hundred fifty, and he kind of smiled. It's fifteen, the, in Utica, it's two thousand to twenty-five hundred people a day, six days a week from nine till midnight, every day, come to that facility. So then, and he explained everything to us, how they do that.
And they're buying retail marijuana products.
Correct, so I think, so today, so today I met with another, the the aftermath, and I said, we're all done, and I'll explain that in a second. So now we've done more research with operators and they've all confirmed, so today, um, one came in and said, let let me explain, I've got, I have a spot in Rochester, I didn't come in early, I'm not worried about the points, if I wanted to do it, I can do this. I do three thousand people a day and I have a grow operation and a and a processing operation in Lake Orion. And we'd be glad to show it to you and how complicated it is, et cetera, but beware, at three, two thousand people a day, where are you gonna put that downtown? Things like, let's say you put it in the core, I said, what's the average, uh, what's the average stay, twenty minutes? So if I'm smart, you go into the deck, you do your business, you come back out, you fill the whole deck up all day long and you never pay a dime, it's an hour free. That's a problem. And it's gonna, and then the Roxy's there, and if they're there till midnight, you're gonna take away all the parking for the Roxy and for everything, so possible problem. So right after we met with the Puff guy, then, and watched the guy, guy that does Joyology. So Joyology's in Lake Orion and his brother owns Liv, which is in Lake Orion. And they, same thing, two thou- fifteen hundred, two thousand people or more. The one in Romeo does twenty-five hundred people, he does one point five million a month. Um, and he said, they, I said, so how do cities, you hear all the cities are gonna get all this money, so it was explained to me today that the whole state takes all the money and puts it into a pot and then it's not by your per store capital. He said, if you put three in Rochester, he he said, it will outperform anything in metro Detroit easily. These are guys that know this business, um but you won't get the extra money because it's just, say there was a hundred in the state and you had three, you'd get three percent of it. I said, what last year was shared with each community? Three to four hundred thousand. He said, it's gonna be going up, obviously with more of them, so that's automatically you get, he said. But then, the guy from Puff said, ask the mayor in Utica, ask the council, it's legal, I I make a lot of money, so I report a lot of different things. I am sponsoring things, I don't want my name all over it, I I get it, it's still sensitive, but there's other community things that a lot of people did. In Romeo, they tried to sponsor the whole Peach Festival, like.
They were, they were all over and it's like you had the kids stationed and then you had the dispensary, which was really interesting.
It's very, it's very, even they have.
They're gonna have snacks for kids.
All the guys we met with were very professional. Yeah, they were professional, they were very cognizant of the the idea behind it all, so. Um, we got, at five o'clock, we got three letters, so Jeremy and I had met with the guys that own Bangkok Restaurant, we told you, I think, last meeting. So they were gonna tear it down, build a three-story building, first floor, a brand-new Bangkok restaurant, and then apartments above it, eight of them, I think. They came in, I think they have a dispensary, was in their family, or they, oh no, they brought, that's when they brought um, the shoe. Yeah, they brought, oh, they brought the Puff guy, so they, they said, maybe they'll make the restaurant smaller so they could have the dispensary and the restaurant and the apartments like, so people wanna live above a dispensary and Dairy Queen's right there and you want all these kids that, so we're, they can write, the ordinance walks you through a way, but it says you can't do anything extraordinarily different to them, but I think we, the planning commission will have the right to ask a lot of questions. You wouldn't put a liquor license store next to something you wouldn't put.
How about parking?
Pardon me?
This is like having three Chick-fil-A's come in.
That's exactly what I said. It's like three Chick-fil-, so I can't believe MDOT's gonna let anybody, well, the guy from Puff innocently said, I'm gonna tear down the wall, Dairy Queen, I'm gonna connect all the lots, we'll go out to Albertson, there'll be no problem, we'll come out the light. Said, did you know that that light doesn't line up anywhere and it's never going to? He's like, what? And I said, you can't use that light, so you're gonna trade two thousand people a day trying to do what you do at Dairy Queen?
How to stop them.
So the, so the other one is the um audio, the the audio place up on North Main, there's a contractor, that's a house, and then the audio uh place.
Yes.
The advanced audio. And they op, they they got options on both those buildings, they have parking in the rear, but again, I can't see MDOT thinking that's a great idea, in that left turn light, you have two thousand people doing that a day.
They're not gonna let that happen.
That's gonna be a problem. So the person that came in today is like, exactly, you're not very good at, you're not very, you're gonna be a great place to retail if we take all your parking downtown. And everybody's gonna be ticked off because you're gonna, we're gonna take all the parking all day long. So you would want it someplace else, like, why don't you get ahead of it, right, ordinance says, says, do it on South Street. Can't retail on South Street, there's no capacity on South Street. We aren't really a great place to maneuver that many Chick- a Chick-fil-A, that's the reason it's not here. So, right now, we don't know, we'll see what happens.
What's the fix here, Nick? Dying to hear, right?
So I'm not, this is not, I'm not opinion, the fix is, the people of Rochester vote no.
All right.
That they don't, they don't feel like we're the right spot, not from the philosophy, but it's hard to make it work and not affect all of our other little boutique businesses. So we're gonna, there would be a lot of information going out, the city can't send anything out, negative or positive, and we tell them, we'll follow the rules.
Can the DDA put something out about the impact to the businesses?
It's, it's, yeah, it's an umbrella, so, so, but but there are people that are gonna talk about.
Is there some type of committee that may have been formed?
There is a potential committee that may have been formed.
That is gonna start doing some messaging, et cetera, okay.
So anyway, so I just give you updates, so we're, it's out of our hands, but wow, it's.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So you mentioned the ones right by us, Auburn Hills, Troy and us, right?
Troy supposedly, we were told, said, nah, sue us, well.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. So is there a formula? We're three point five square miles.
Yeah.
We, and the the petition calls for three dispensaries here in town, a bit excessive.
Hazel Park has eight.
Okay.
They allowed it from the start.
But Auburn Hills and Troy are much bigger than us. Are they three as well?
One.
Or is it commensurate with the amount of square mileage you have?
No, it's not a form, they just wrote one and picked the number. Literally, they said.
Well, couldn't we sue based on that?
So I was told, no, so I was told today, once they come in, so the last part of the story is, if it's approved, we have thirty days as a council to award those licenses. And it tells you, yeah, you go by points or it's based on experience, blah, 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 so.
Is there an investigation of the proposed licenses, like a liquor license?
They have to be already licensed at the state already before they ever come here.
They're on top of all this.
Yeah, they're, they're so on top, so in Romeo, the big boys went in yesterday, we got this information, and offered their license for three point five million dollars to buy them out. They said, without a doubt, the three, when you are, when the city council makes a decision, when you're granting one of those free, three licenses, five thousand bucks is what it costs, it's gonna be worth five million dollars each. So, and they can transfer them to other people, so we can't transfer, but they can. So they figured this out immensely.
No, no local taxing ability?
You get your share.
Like a landfill, you get a fee at least for.
So it's like the tip jar for, you know, the restaurant, everyone puts their, and you, no matter what you do, front of the house, back of the house, you get your three percent or whatever and that's it.
It's crazy. So it's a.
That's a lot of dope being smoked, it sounds like. I mean, my gosh.
What I was told today was.
It's the kids.
Well, this is probably the most interesting part that makes us not know what will happen in Rochester. The three, four, now that I've talked to that are the big guys and legit, said eight, eighty, one was sixty-eight, one was eighty-four percent. Of their clients are fifty-five to seventy.
Yeah.
Because now edibles, not, it's not smo- smoking marijuana, it's edibles for cancer, for bad health, sleep.
Aches and pains and illnesses, yeah.
He said, that's the people that come there. Yeah, and it's like, yeah, they don't wanna take pharmaceutical drugs, they'd rather control it with this, so.
Or CBD, whatever that stuff is, which.
So that's, that's a, that's their clients now, not just everybody coming in.
So that's why they signed the petition?
Yeah. So it's, it's uh, it's gonna be interesting and we'll have to react really quickly when the time comes, if it comes, so we'll, we'll keep you updated, but um, to know those licenses were that much money, that's, that's big money.
Yeah.
That's big money. And we don't know what you said, uh, that that they might have very well, people that haven't called us could already have assigned, they're just not saying anything, because if they fail, they keep the money.
Has anyone heard from the tide cleaner people?
They, no, and I, none of those four, no, they said, we'll tell you who we have, they told us, we didn't, couldn't get to him, so, no, don't know yet. And I know the collision shop now and the cleaners are still under contract, they got through the environmental issue, though they're working on it, so that's still for, that's not one of them.
That's never verded.
All the other vacant buildings in town that I gave the council a list, they're not signed. So it's somebody we don't know about. We didn't know about Soundvantage and the contractor that caught the.
Do we, so does that, can we put different um requirements in terms of their parking because of the?
Retail one to two hundred. So, so imagine a thou- so a thousand square feet would would only need five parking spaces and they're gonna bring two thousand people, it's, it's just doesn't make sense.
Can we put all three at the RCS building property?
We, we thought of that.
Seriously?
No, I know, we, I actually thought it's unfortunate zone residential, the ordinance, that way it was written, can't do it residential.
There's no parking there.
You know what you do, you turn the meters up to a hundred bucks an hour.
There you go.
You know?
It'll be, so there's an update for that, so that's all I've got.
My gosh.
It's been fun.
Wow.
Go Lions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number eight, public comment, any rows, you have anyone waiting?
No, there's no one waiting.
Thank you. Nick, any upcoming agenda items?
Nope, I think we're.
Are we gonna meet twice in October, November, December, do you believe?
October. Probably not in November because of the holiday.
Okay.
Yeah, that might be tight there, so, but we have the, I think the cement plant will be on, they've redone their drawings, so we should see that one. Um, and may, I don't think Bangkok's gonna get in in time, forget about the pot part, just the regular restaurant, shouldn't be in time. Go up and look at Schneider's, the brick's going on the front, the garages, basements, they're pouring the floors tomorrow, that's finally moving ahead up in.
Any sales yet?
Uh, not yet, I saw him today, he said not yet.
Okay, very good.
There you go, okay.
Okay, anything else? Any other comments, questions, all right. Anyone objects? Let's be easy, Jim.
Thank you.
And enjoy the game. At least, for the first half.
Whenever I look for the circle thing, no, I think.
It's in the Detroit line.